All right, everybody ready? The appointed hour has arrived, so we will call the Monday, May 6th meeting of the Aestine's Planning Commission to Order. We'll begin with roll call. Boldhouse?
Here.
Darling?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Mauer?
Here.
McLean?
Here.
Moyer-Kale?
Here.
Tassava?
Here.
And Hapfield here. Did I call you?
You didn't, but I'm here.
I see that. I was trying to keep things in alphabetical order, so I apologize.
Yes, don't worry.
Light is also here, so thank you all. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice to have you all with us tonight. Thank you for being here. We have a draft agenda in front of you. Are there any additions or deletions you'd like to propose?
I like motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Okay, motion?
Support?
Motion and support to accept the agenda as distributed. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Likewise, you've received draft copies of the March 4th meeting minutes. Any corrections?
I'll move approval.
I'll support.
We have a motion and support to approve the minutes discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. All right, we have no information items unless, Dan, you have anything else?
I have nothing else to add other than I did pass out the zoning information from Rebecca Harvey prior to the meeting.
Yes, which we'll get to later in the agenda. At this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our Vice Chairman, Tom Mauer, because I have a conflict with the next item on the agenda, so...
Before you excuse yourself, can I ask Rebecca for clarification on the application? Since the application changed from zoning request for that property to including all similar properties, did that change how the Planning Commission would review this? My understanding is the application asked us to consider if we would take this on as a task to reconsider zoning. We are doing that. Are they still applicants now, since we took it on and we're looking at more than just their property?
Yeah, actually, that's a really good question. So, no, the applicant remains the applicant, but the applicant's request to the board was for one piece of property.
Right.
Of which you essentially decided that that's going to be difficult to just do one, and so the answer might likely be no, because it's in the middle of all of this other zoning. So, maybe it makes more sense from a planning perspective to enlarge that area, and the Board, the Planning Commission, has the ability to initiate rezonings on their own. But it does not change the fact that, the fact that you are considering his parcel is by request. So, I would say that maybe what would make you feel more comfortable would be that the Planning Commission can act on everything and it can act on just the applicants, too. But it doesn't change the fact that he is the applicant.
If it gets stamped this way, either approved or denied, and it was because of consideration of other lots than theirs, could that be perceived as...
I would say you do too then, right? So, let's say you go down the avenue of, you have the conversation as the Planning Commission about the larger area going from its current zone to either the R2 or the R1, and the Planning Commission says, "Actually, we're not in favor of either of those," let's say, and that's going to be your recommendation, then I think the Planning Commission can say, "So, we're the ones who expanded it. Let's just look at the applicant's parcel and see if we think any differently."
I agree, but is that the way it was noticed? Does it change...
Oh, yeah, you've noticed for everything, so you can, the Planning Commission can recommend action on any variation of that. It can be for the R1 or the R2. It can be for any or all of those parcels within the designated area. It can be for some in the R1, some in the R2.
All right, well, that brings me to point three.
Only had two.
If it's just the one property, if we consider the applicants separate from everything else, is the chairman still conflict of interest in reviewing just that one property?
Well, the conflict is automatic if he, if his property is within 300 feet of the property under consideration. If...
Are you?
No. Well, the property under consideration is the whole area, because that's all of what's been noticed, so...
I agree, but that's why I asked for this clarification. Are we dealing with the applicant or are we dealing with the whole district?
The whole noticed area at this point.
Well, you're dealing with the whole noticed area, but I would say that the Planning Commission is free to play that out, and you said last month that you thought there was merit in considering the larger area. I would say that's going to suggest that the Planning Commission is going to first consider the larger area, and that's what you're going to act on. I think that if, depending on what you do with that, if the answer to the question is no, right, no, we don't want to change anything, or we're interested in doing the whole area R1, let's say, and that's kind of where you come down on that, the applicant can always, and if the applicant doesn't want R1, the applicant can always say, "I actually would prefer for you just to rule on my parcel. I'm the one who made application, that's one piece. I asked for R2. I actually would like you to rule on my actual application." You can make two rulings then. You can say, "Here's what we think about your piece for the R2. We've noticed for the whole area. Here's what we think about that." So, in answer to your question on the one, that when you get down to just his, if the chair is not located within 300 feet of that, he technically would not have a conflict. I mean, I don't know the value of changing the chairmanship in the middle of a public hearing, but...
Right, well, that's, I still, I haven't heard clarification, so...
Although you're talking about more...
Does the Board know which way they'd like to go? Are we opening up?
Well, I think we need to discuss it. We haven't talked about it yet.
As a class thing, or are we looking at the applicant's property first or solely?
No, you're looking at the whole thing first. That's what you decided to do.
And if that's what we decided to do, then there's not technically an applicant for this first part.
Did that make a difference to you?
I think it does to me, just because of what gets published, what becomes part of our public record. If we accept the, if the Board rules one way, it could look favorably or not favorably on the applicant, potentially. So, then it gets stamped that that property, 919 whatever, gets stamped as being the cause or the instigator of this action. And...
In what way? The reason I say that is because the applicant said, "I'm requesting consideration of rezoning my piece of property to R2." The Board said, "We're going to include a whole bunch of other properties and we're also going to consider R1." If the Board's final action is to rezone everything in that area that was noticed to R1, then all the properties are recommended for private rezoning. I don't, in what way is the applicant's request going to be sort of defined as being...
Isn't this going to be written up with 939 as part of the ruling specifically? Because they're the applicant. I'm saying if we did this without them coming to us, we just decided we're looking at it as a Board, there's no property that either brought it to us or had the chance to speak upfront as an applicant. We're doing it as a Board, and if that's what we're doing, then I think we should do it as a Board first. And maybe, I don't know, Board, I'm not getting any eye glances. I don't know, I just read that and I thought, "Wow, this is, this is a twofer here. This is two different things going on at the same time." One of them, I would like the chairman's comments. The other one, I absolutely understand, that if we're ruling in general, then I'm sorry, we don't get his comments.
Well, okay, so there's a couple, I guess I would have a couple of comments. I don't know that there are answers to your questions, but first of all, this is absolutely common for a Planning Commission to do this. It's common for you as a Planning Commission to do it. In fact, I think it is beholden upon a Planning Commission to think big picture when you get a request. Sometimes it doesn't make any sense to do that. So, when a Planning Commission has modified what they notice in some way, either expanding geographically or expanding the request, it is because the Planning Commission has decided that, from a planning perspective, it makes sense to have that conversation, because that's all you're doing is having the conversation, so you notice for that, all right? It has no more implication than that.
Right.
It doesn't. I mean, from a procedural standpoint. Now, as it relates to, by virtue of the fact that expanding the area, it created conflict of interest, and now the chair cannot participate as a Board member, the chair, any Planning Commission member who has a conflict of interest can always participate in a public hearing by virtue of a representative or by virtue of providing, having a representative provide written comment. So, it just means that they can't vote and they can't participate as an influencing agent for the Planning Commission because they have a conflict. But that doesn't mean that the chair could not have provided his comments otherwise, so it's not a penalty to him or to the Board, the fact that the Board has said, "We think there's merit in having a bigger conversation."
Another issue that I see is, we know specific situations from the applicant as to why they are asking for the rezoning. If we were looking at this in general, as all properties lumped together, we didn't go in, and I wasn't here, so I guess I can say, "I don't believe that we went and looked at every non-conforming condition of every property that we are considering," whereas we have kind of looked at it from the applicant's perspective. So, I'm, I think we're going to be a little biased, because we are seeing the reason they came to us rather than going to the zoning Board.
Well, but the problem, I'm trying to...
Yeah, if I may step in just for a minute. Yeah, when the applicant submitted their application to consider rezoning, it was because their property currently is in the suburban residential zoning district, so the site setback requirements for the addition that they wanted to put on to add a attached garage, they weren't large enough setback requirements. So, I informed the applicants at that time that, you know, generally, individual or spot zoning is frowned upon. You know, just generally, Planning Committees just don't do that. So, staff reviewed the properties highlighted in red in the map, and, you know, number one, there's similar, the properties to the east of the red line, there are similar characteristics to that, to the area bordered in red. Also, staff did look at all the parcels and 13 additional parcels in that red outlined area also are currently non-conforming based on site setback. So, not only the applicant's property is currently legal non-conforming, but nearly half of the other parcels, or more than half the other parcels currently are legal non-conforming, and then the three vacant parcels that are there are either non-conforming based on lot size or lot width. So, you know, that's the reason why staff conveyed it on the city, or excuse me, the Planning Commission, to consider rezoning of all of the areas in red to either R2 or partially R1 as kind of a lead-in to the suburban residential district. So, yes, it was looked at. Thank you.
Dan, if I may, did the application, the original application, are they applying for one parcel to be rezoned, or did the original application request the whole area?
No, just the one. Upon staff review, to Rebecca's point, you know, it's good for Planning Commissions to look longer term when it comes to rezoning, and if it makes sense, if it mimics the joining properties with setbacks, lot sizes, things of that nature, it makes, or gives an opportunity to the Planning Commission to review and say, you know, not only this parcel, but several other parcels in that area would benefit from a rezoning if they would ever want to consider adding onto their homes, because if the way it is now, you know, the applicant, the only avenue they would have is to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and that's a tough road. You know, ZBA has specific strict standards that they have to follow. So, this would give other property owners in the area a relaxation of the setback standards with a rezoning to R2 or R1.
I think I agree with Mr. Mauer that you have an application for a spot rezon, and then a Board requested action for an entire area rezoned. Is that what, where you were heading with all that?
That is, and I think I'm slightly biased when I consider the individual request when I'm looking at the general. I'd rather, honestly, I'd rather remove the individual from the preliminary hearing and deal with it as a group site or rezoning request.
But the individual is a part of the group.
No.
There's more that's included in a rezoning request than just their, the setback requirement, which is why they brought this to us.
I'm not looking at the specific details.
But that's not the only thing that's involved in a rezoning, and if we're looking at a rezoning, we have to look at all the different implications of it for the full noticed area.
When we look at a full rezoning, though, we do it as a Board. We don't have outside people coming in. They ultimately come in as part of the hearing.
That's not, it's a public hearing when there's a rezoning as well.
They come in as part of the public hearing. They're not an applicant, though normally they do it.
That's what we're doing.
That's where I'm hung up on that.
Whether it's an applicant or another member of the public, they can speak at the public hearing.
I'll admit, your trouble is perplexing me a little bit, only because it's standard fair. An application often and frequently drives an expansion of what the Planning Commission considers. It doesn't always drive the end result, but it will, the Planning Commission, you know, usually takes that as an opportunity to say, just like you guys last month were saying, "Maybe, in addition to the rezoning, we should schedule a public hearing on modifying the setback standards," because obviously, there are two solutions available, and maybe there's merit in one. But then after talking about it, they said, "No, actually, let's not do that. Let's just schedule the rezoning." But we already know that looking at a single parcel, oftentimes looking at a single parcel, it's dead in the water, because it's, you're not going to stick some unusual zoning or inconsistent zoning. So, usually what happens is when the Planning Commission looks at the surrounding area and says, "Does it make sense to consider a larger area?" Sometimes it doesn't, and then really, all that happens is the applicant gets a denial, right? Because just looking at their piece alone means no, the, looking at the larger piece doesn't make sense. You guys said, "Actually, looking at the larger piece, just based on the current zoning pattern, master plan, and land use pattern, there is actually merit to talking about this area." So, getting, focusing on the origin of why it's in front of you is perplexing me, because it doesn't matter. I know you feel it does, but it, procedurally, it doesn't, and you do it all the time. All Planning Commissions do. Because you could have initiated it without an application.
Right.
But you didn't, because it's currently supported by the master plan. But now you have someone saying, "Well, I don't know about the rest of it, but I want my piece different." And they're not going to come in and ask for other people's property, so the Planning Commission says, "Well, if we're going to be talking about your piece, the only way it's going to make sense is if we look at a bigger area and there's rational thinking for thinking of a bigger area because of this, so let's have the conversation. We don't know what we think about it, but let's have the conversation."
All I know is there's pertinent facts that I know about that property that I don't know about the other ones, and if that's on me because I didn't go and look up setbacks, I didn't go out there and measure...
See, the setbacks, but the setbacks don't matter.
Yes, they do.
No, they don't.
They're part of what we're considering. I know it's just going from RS to either, you know, B1 or R1 or R2. I know that, but it is setbacks. It is acreage. It is lot coverage. It is all of those things that I'm considering, because those are what makes up those districts.
Well, then I would say that because the whole area was noticed for consideration, then it is the whole area that would have been studied for the public hearing. So, I guess you're saying, "I'm, I don't know those things on the larger area," then, you know, you might feel like you're not prepared to talk about the whole area, but...
I don't think the Board is, because I don't think we had those open discussions. We didn't ask for Dan...
Well, you're having them now.
We didn't ask Dan to do the history on the other 19 properties.
So...
How many of them are non-conforming? How many are non-conforming because of setbacks? How many are non-conforming because of size? We didn't ask Dan to do any of that.
Well, he did present some information just a few moments ago regarding that, but it's not, I don't know how relevant even that is, because what we're talking about is the zoning, I mean, what's there is there, but we're talking more about the future and what can happen for development there.
What's there is there, and one of the comments is, "13 of these properties could be multi, or duplexes." No, they can't, not unless the house burns down, and then they can't rezone, or they decide, "Oh, I'm going to put a duplex up there instead." So, we are looking at today, but we're also looking at what could happen in the future.
Yeah, now, looking at the future is the point, and that was actually pointed out last month, too, is what was the value of looking at another zoning district? And so, that point was made, where all of those stats were presented, where it said, "Here are, although these properties are all occupied, here are the dimensions of them, and once rezoned, if rezoned, which then permits duplexes, there are X number of properties within this area that meet the size standards for, to accommodate a duplex, assuming the house were removed or converted."
Right, so those details do matter. That's what I'm saying. It's not just the label. It is the details that make up those labels, and I think we don't often dig deep enough into the details.
So, I would suggest, Tom, that your particular, if what your position is, is that I'm missing some facts, the public hearing is for that purpose, is of identifying, you know, you're receiving public comment, you're doing findings of fact, and maybe at the end of that, you'll reach a point where you will say, or the Board will say, "Here are additional facts we need." And if that's true, then you postpone it and we get to those facts.
Very good. I just brought it up. I wanted, if the Board thinks that we should proceed the way it's laid out, I'm more than happy to. I just, I would like some feedback.
We decided at the last meeting, we wanted to have a public hearing to hear what the neighborhood thinks, and I would say we do that. Where we go from there is another decision.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. Any other comments before I proceed with the agenda, or at least the public hearing steps? You're up next, Dave, or Dan?
Yeah, the only thing I'll mention for the record is, the public hearing was originally scheduled for the April meeting. Due to a lack of a quorum being present, the public hearing was tabled, postponed until tonight's meeting. So, it was properly noticed, it was tabled, and the public hearing will occur tonight. So, that's just for the minutes and for the record.
Why don't you stay there and introduce the details?
You're up. Before you start the public hearing, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So, yeah, we're basically picking up tonight, once the public hearing is open, the request from the applicant, the Moyers, to consider rezoning request from the current suburban residential RS zoning classification to an R2 zoning classification. The applicant requested this. Based on the current situation of the parcel that they live in, they would like to add a two-stall garage off to the west of the property. The current site setback requirements being 40-foot total and 15 minimum per side would preclude them from doing that. Rezoning to an R2 would make it much more possible for them to do that. So, as mentioned, you know, spot zoning is something the Planning Commission generally does not look favorable upon, as they shouldn't. So, staff did take it upon ourself to look at other properties of similar characteristics in the neighborhood that are currently R2, and then outline with the map itself, the properties that are currently zoned are RS or suburban residential for consideration of the Planning Commission this evening.
Thanks. Rebecca, you had some comments that you had submitted, some review?
Yes, actually, this was submitted at the March meeting, and that's where I presented these facts, and this is when the Board sort of focused on the rezoning and sort of discarded the idea of the text amendment, or the changing the standards. But, yeah, as you know, when you consider rezoning, you're driven largely by your master plan, and the master plan recognized that this particular area is right in between R2 zoning and RS zoning, and so there's, it's understandable that there is a question which this middle area is more like, and so therefore, should maybe, should be zoned. And the master plan sort of recognizes that dual placement, in that the regulating plan recognizes it as a density of development that would be consistent with R2, but your future land use map actually has it classified as the RS, this suburban residential. So, you know, I think that, again, that raises this question of, "Well, which is it better?" Which is really where the Planning Commission landed and said, "Well, maybe it would be better to be in between those, this R1, which has a slightly less density than the R2, and doesn't allow for the two-family dwellings, and so maybe that's a better solution than the requested R2," recognizing that the R2 brought in the density and the two-family use options not present in the RS. So... So, and the R1 would in fact, requested R1, or the proposed R1 would be supported by the master plan, as would the requested R2, really. I think you could argue that that. So it was really a question of, so what do we think is more appropriate, given the current land use pattern and the standards? On top of that, and I provided that in the report as well, what the setbacks and minimum lot sizes are on page three in the R1 versus the R2. So the side setback in the R2, that which is, was really what prompted the applicant's request. In the requested R2, it's six foot. In the R1, you're considering it seven foot. In the RS, which is what it currently is, it's 15 to 25. So I, I think there was the feeling that the R1 district, in addition to providing the density and the not the two-family option, but it also offered the setback relief that might, that might be value to properties in that area. So I think the thought was, was that the R1 sort of hit on all of those, those things that were being talked about.
I wasn't here, so I'm going to ask the board, is that a pretty good summary of where we left this?
I believe it is, yes.
Does anyone have any questions for Rebecca? All right. Let's bring the applicant to the podium, if you've got anything you want to add.
I'm Gary Moyer, and I just wanted to say thank you for all the effort that's put into this because it's been, what, three months? Everybody's been back and forth, and I just appreciate their efforts in making this happen. What I wanted to say tonight is just that we're investing quite a bit of money in that two-car garage to add on currently what we just purchased this house back in September. So it's going to really increase the value of the properties. It's going to help the neighborhood. You know, I walk this neighborhood all the time now, and I see a lot of houses that can certainly use a lot of repairs and painting, and, and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to improve the neighborhood to be better. And I know that this causes all kinds of confusions on now and the future. We're just trying to make the home what we'd like it to be and make the value in that area because the end that we're at is a beautiful end of the subdivision. We love it there. It's a great area. We just want to improve it. So we're just hoping to get the R2 so, because it's tight quarters, but unfortunately, the way the house is turned on the property, it makes it even more difficult to add on. So we're just asking for any consideration that we can get. But thank you.
Any questions by the commission, board?
Well, I do have a question for you. I thought we were keeping this as the whole. We weren't separating the applicant from making the decision or having the public hearing. I'm confused now.
So am I. And that's why I drew the very distinction at the start of this and asked for board feedback. Because, again, I find it difficult now to separate that property's request from the broad request. But we moved past that. So we are treating this like it's the applicant asking for a public hearing.
No, I don't think that's what we're doing.
We are going to rule on the whole properties, but they are the applicant. That's why I asked it.
We just need to open the, the public hearing for everybody.
And we are, we are two from that. We are two lines from that. I'm following the agenda that I have here. So any questions for the applicant?
I guess I have the same question I had at our last meeting. Has the applicant, have you guys actually measured and determined whether, even if we did what you're asking for, if you could do what you're hoping to do?
Yeah, we did. We've measured. We're, we're, I mean, we're right on that edge, but, you know, certainly R2, we can make work. There's no doubt about it at all, and we'll go forward with it with blueprints and plans and whatever, and permits. But R2 would work for us for sure.
Thank you. Any more to add, Rebecca?
No. Now, you're, the R2 district has a six-foot side and the R1 has a seven. They're also considering R1, so I think Chelsea's question is whether or not the R1 district would also be, would work for them.
Probably. You know, I'd have to just re-measure and, Pam, I don't know.
It would be, you wouldn't get a full two-car garage.
Right.
I mean, it's borderline.
I, I would only remind, I know Chelsea's asking it as a matter of, of, of being comprehensive in your consideration. In all truthfulness to the planning commission, whether or not the applicant can do what they want to do is not something that you consider in your zoning.
Right. It's irrelevant.
Right. I mean, I understand that it, it's a practical question, right? Are we going through the trouble and it's not even worth helping?
That's why I started this whole thing.
Yeah. But you're absolutely right. When you go, you know, that's, how an applicant wants to use a piece of property is never what you consider in a rezoning request.
All right. Then, Dan, I've got a couple of questions. Number of property owners that were noticed? Do you have that number specifically? Was it 19?
All property, all property owners within the highlighted area and all property owners within 300 feet of that highlighted area received a notice.
Okay. And then, did you receive any responses by mail, email, or other? And I'll, I'll get to those once we start the hearing. But do you have any other?
I received no email responses. I had, I had a couple phone inquiries from people that were outside of the targeted area, area, just wanting to know what effect it was going to have on them. I said absolutely nothing on them because their home is already in the R2 zoning classification.
Okay. All right. Well, then I'm going to open the public hearing, and we are going to consider all of the listed properties within the red, you don't have it up on the map, but within the red zone as a group. So is there anyone that wishes to add? You as the applicant, you already did. You can say more if you want, but.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think I need to say much more, but thank you.
All right. If anyone has other comments they'd like to add at the podium, give your name and your address, please.
Steven Kitty-Hulk, 943 West Clinton. We're Gary's neighbors. We're the ones that this personal single variance would affect. It puts a garage right in our line of view for the, our site, our, our property. Couple of questions I have, or I, I'd like to answer, and I probably am wrong. We happened to turn this on to start watching, and that's why we're late. We didn't know the open hearing was tonight. The open hearing was scheduled for April. It was canceled in April, and there was nothing else sent out about open hearing being out, being out again for this property that were there. We did get the notification in the original set back in March. We have not seen anything after that because the meeting was canceled. We didn't know what was going to. My concern is, a couple of things. You talk about homes that are out of compliance right now. If you move this to R1 or R2, how many are still going to be out of compliance? I'd like to know that data. I'm not a big believer in the accuracy of the GIS fetch program because in our property, you show the line on, on the computer, and what is there is not accurate because we've staked it, it's staked off. It's a, it was staked in the ground. And on the northeast side of my property, first northeast corner of my property, it's a good two feet further than what the line is. So that, that use of that is, I think is kind of irrelevant. But when I go back and say, "How many are still going to be compliant, out of compliance," is because when you do use that, there's at least five houses right now that are over, over the boundary line on the site. They're not close to it. They're over. And then there's another group of those, I think you had 19, Dan, out of compliance. 19, there's others of those that clearly won't wait six or seven feet setback because they're way too close to the property as it is. I, I am kind of, from what I get garnered from your conversation, Tom, to begin with, was it, it, it kind of surprised me that when the Moyers applied for this, that all of a sudden this exclusive area became open for rezoning. At the last meeting back in March that was held, I mentioned that if I were the Haywood family to the west of our property and anything all the way out to Levi's property, I'd be concerned that that eventually could be then turned into, because you're setting a precedent. Dave shot me down by saying that we're not in consideration at that time, but I wasn't talking about that. I was talking about the precedent that you're setting by changing the zoning area. Because to me, there's been nothing said that would lead you to want to change that. I don't know why we want to all of a sudden change it because one property owner asked. There is the other way to go about it, and a variance, variance is something that can be approved through the only one appeals, even though it's not an easy thing, am I correct?
It's, it's certainly a procedural option.
Right.
I, I don't know that it's a likely outcome, but.
Neither of these would necessarily be likely, I would assume, other than what the circumstances are, the people that are sitting in the room at the time. So I'd be saying, there, there is another outlet for Gary to do this. And, and Gary knows, we're not, he's a phenomenal neighbor right now. We've been working great with each other. I have no problem with that. I'm just dreading looking out my side window at a garage that when we bought the property wasn't there. So a couple of little things I'd like to know before we rule on it. I'd love to know how many more are still going to be out of compliance, because there are going to be some.
Thank you. I believe that the meeting issue that you first brought up, if it's discussed at this meeting and postponed or tabled, it doesn't require noticing again, correct?
Yeah.
It's canceled.
Yeah. No, that, that is accurate. Legally speaking, a meeting that is canceled due to act of quorum, everything on it gets automatically legally postponed to the next meeting. But I understand the applicant.
I mean, just to be honest, how would I know that?
I don't know. I'm bringing it up because I, I know when we table something or postpone it, I know what it means. It moves to the next scheduled or, or a special date, but I, I didn't know about cancel. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
So I apologize that it was unclear. Any comments by board? Any questions? Any concerns? Rebecca, do you have any concerns?
No.
Do you want to respond to anything that you've heard?
No. I, I, I am going to say this one last thing, and then I'll leave you alone. But it was the phraseology that caught my, caught my ear. You are, as a board, you are considering the properties within the red area. That's different than saying, "I thought we were going to consider these as a single group." Those are two different things. What, when you notice something, what you're saying is, because you can't talk about it unless you notice it. So that's the value of noticing something, where you say, "Here are, here's the area we would like to talk about, and so we're going to, we're going to notice the boundaries so that we know that anything within those boundaries, we can, we can discuss and take action on, to make a recommendation." And so in that respect, if you think of it that way, not, "We're looking at this as one piece," but rather, "Anything within this area, we are free to discuss and make recommendation on." Then that helps you sort of understand that, yeah, because you might look at the whole area and, and through your fact finding and discussion, say, "Oh, maybe it only makes sense to consider rezoning properties south of Madison." I'm just making that up. But, right? So you can, you can discuss and say, "Here, here's this area. We, we think it makes sense to rezone. We don't think it makes sense to do the..." You know, you can have that conversation. Anything within that area. That's not the same as saying, "I thought we were going to do, treat them all as one piece." Like, no, that's not.
I was trying to distinguish between the single property and the group.
I know what you were saying.
And it is a group.
I'm talking about Jackie. Your thing with the application and the applicant, that's something I.
Sorry. I, I still think this meeting started on something that I was trying to eliminate. Still started contrary to where I think it should have started, but we're past that. Sorry to have said.
Right. I was only, I was actually thinking of what you were saying.
All right. There's no other comments. I'm going to close the public hearing. All right. Any comments? Any questions by the board?
I have a question. Rebecca, I mean, as a planning commission, as any planning commission, we're guided by our master plan first and foremost. So our master plan, regardless who brought this up, it could have been me, for crying out loud. I don't know. I could have said, "I don't like this. I don't think this makes sense." That being said, we're looking at that, those properties within those boundaries and saying to ourselves, "Would rezoning make sense with our master plan?" Is that something that our master plan is leading us towards or supporting? Because that needs to guide our decision-making. Is that true?
That the master plan guides your decision-making?
Yes. Okay. Just wanted to verbally say that out loud.
Let me verbally rebuke that. And I know that's what is said. That's the idea behind the master plan. But the planning commission and our current zoning is current. It is what we are living today. It is, it is how we're going to guide when the zoning board takes on something. It is what's written. It's what's stamped. It's what makes sense. It's what is neighborhood. It, it's similar properties. The master plan is something that is a process. It's, it's run through the state. It's mandated by the state for us to think forward, but it doesn't go through anywhere near the scrutiny that this board does when it considers properties and zoning districts and setbacks and, and lot coverage. I know that it legally might say that. That might be how it's presented, but it doesn't go through near the scrutiny. The master plan is so much more comprehensive in what it's looking at that the zoning element, I, I don't, I don't want to look to the master plan first. I want to look to the current zoning. I want to look to this document, this chapter 90, and I want to read what's in that because I'm not going to find this stuff in the master plan. I'm not going to find our current zoning.
You know, I would, so you're supposed to look at both. So let me first just say that. So, yeah, the reason it's your overarching guide is because in Michigan, you cannot zone inconsistent with your plan. So that's just another way of saying your plan has to guide it. So in that respect.
But then the plan has to be guided by something more than what's being guided by right now.
So, so, the way the law is, is that you cannot zone your property inconsistent with the plan. That doesn't mean that you can't go in and change your plan. And sometimes that happens where, where a community looks at a rezoning request, they think that based on a change of conditions, something has happened, it warrants modifying it outside of what the plan says, and they go in and they modify the plan, and then they support the rezoning. But, but procedurally speaking, you must be, you must zone consistent with your plan. Now, I'm going to take that one step further. That's one of several things that guide your rezoning discussion, but it's a big one. But you, you have to remember, in your zoning ordinance, so you're right when you say, "Wow, we put a lot of thought into creating our zoning standards." And it is true that when you look at a rezoning, you're looking at surrounding land use, surrounding land use patterns, you know, transfer, all those kinds of things. So you are looking at all of those things. But theoretically, your zoning standards in your zoning ordinance are based on achieving a particular idea or vision in your plan. If not, it would be considered arbitrary. And, and that's, you don't, you're, you don't want your zoning ordinance to be arbitrary. So every metric in your zoning ordinance, it's true that it has the law and the plan doesn't. The plan is a document where the, the zoning standard is the law. But that law, in that standard in the zoning ordinance, you must be able to say, "That's intended to achieve this thing in the plan." If you. If you can't point to that thing, then your standard's arbitrary. So that's why the value is always, "What does our master plan say so that we can understand that our zoning is implementing the plan?" So even though you're looking at surrounding zoning patterns and it's absolutely correct to say, "If we rezone this, what would be the outcome?" Which is, I think, some of what you're talking about is, "Well, okay, if we change it and these are the new standards, what does that mean for this area based on its current land division pattern and land use pattern?" That you absolutely should consider. But that's part of the bigger package.
And I get considering both. I just, I wouldn't put the master plan as first. That's not the first thing that I'm going to read because I can't find what I need in that plan. All I can find is general statements.
May I make a comment about the request? In reading all these reviews and discussing this and hearing from the public and our various discussions about this for the past few months, I'm not seeing really a strong case for rezoning either to R1 or R2 or really keeping it RS even. It really is a unique area that doesn't really fit well into any of these particular zoning districts, although it does seem that RS is, what it is now, is most supported by the future land use map. So because I'm not hearing really a strong case for rezoning and changing that, I don't think I'm in favor of the rezoning. I would be interested in talking about the suggested text amendment that you brought up on page three because the side setback does seem excessive to me. And when you look at these five different residential zoning districts, it goes from 50 to 40 to 18 to 15. Like, it's just kind of all over. And I like that suggestion that you brought up, Becky, at the bottom of page three about reducing the side setback to a total of 25 feet. I don't know that that helps the applicant particularly, but again, that's not necessarily why we're having this discussion. But I think that that brings it to something that's more reasonable without rezoning the property when I'm really just not hearing a very strong case for any of the options for rezoning.
How does our current zoning... Maybe, Sarah, maybe you can answer this. How does a total loss by fire or other act of God, how does our current zoning allow the applicant to rebuild? Can they rebuild on the exact same footprint as before, even though it was non-conforming? Or does it open up this kind of discussion?
It depends on how much of it was destroyed.
Yeah, now, non-conforming lots are always buildable. So if what is non-conforming about the piece of property in question, if it's because the lot itself is too small or doesn't have enough frontage, then that never changes its status as buildable. If what is non-conforming is the fact that there's a building on the lot right now that encroaches into the required setback area and so in that respect is non-conforming, and then it gets totally wiped out and someone is going to remove the home and rebuild, then they would be subject to current standards.
They couldn't rebuild on the same footprint? See, I know there are insurance policies that will rebuild on the same footprint. I know there's different districts that I've worked in to get houses rebuilt. That's why I'm specifically asking, "Does ours preclude an existing home, existing non-conforming home, from being rebuilt?" Because if it does, then that's a reason to reconsider the zoning because there's apparently 13 properties that if that were to happen, four and a half tornado wipe out that whole district, how many of them could rebuild on the same...
Well, they could still rebuild. It just wouldn't be the same footprint.
That's not what I asked. That's not what they own and that's not what they're insuring and that's not why they chose that. Or it might not be why they chose it, but I'm saying this is a hardship maybe.
So I have a question, Dan. If these 26 lots are rezoned to either one of those, do you know how many of the 13 would be made non-conforming by rezoning? And if they're changed to either one of those other districts, what the percentage would be then? Instead of it being 50-50 conforming, non-conforming, what that percentage would be if it was either changed to an R1 or an R2?
I don't have that precise information.
Because that might be helpful if... I mean, if you change the zoning and it's still 50%, you know, 50% are non-conforming, you haven't really done anything except for shifted a problem from this person to this person, right? But if you change the zoning and now suddenly 80% of those 26 homes are conforming, that seems like it would be something that would maybe make sense to pursue then.
That is a fair point. That's doing that deeper dive. That's some of the information that I'm not sure the board has right now.
And to your question, this is in your zoning ordinance, your non-conformity section. The way it reads is, "Under restoration and repairs, non-conforming buildings, if a non-conforming building is damaged by fire, wind, act of God, or other calamity, to the extent that the cost for repair or replacement is 60% or more of the fair market value of the building, it may be rebuilt or restored and used only in accordance with the requirements of this zoning code." And then they tell you how to establish that.
Right.
Now, the way you guys have this written is that obviously the restoration would have to be caused by a calamity. So it's not just, you know, "My home's in disrepair. I want to remove it and rebuild."
But that is a like, not likely, I mean, but it is certainly realistic. There are people that fall into that clause. And if the zoning district didn't look into the non-conformity, like we're asking right now, how many in the R1 and R2 would be allowed, would be legal conforming structures, then I think we should dig deeper. Because fires happen, tornadoes happen, and it's not the fault of the homeowner.
So it's an interesting perspective to see your goal be to render all property, all existing buildings conforming.
I'm not saying all, but I think it should be...
Or any.
It should be important. It should be something that this board discusses because this is one of the single most valuable assets that anyone owns. And yet, it might be subject to some other... They might not be able to rebuild it. It's insured to be rebuilt, but what if they can't?
But maybe that's a compelling case, that zoning board of appeals, if you had a...
Absolutely.
Loss.
But we're not supposed to deem...
No, non-conforming situations are not reasons to grant parities.
And it's not an economic benefit or a gain or...
But it's also not a reason to rezone.
It's not. I'm just saying that sometimes when we rezone, and I might be going way farther, sometimes we don't do the deep dive and we just say, "Well, it makes sense." But we don't have the metrics behind it. We don't know that it's going to cause five houses that were conforming to not be conforming. I think that's callous of us not to know those details before we do it.
I feel like we're in search of a problem to solve here, it seems like. And we noticed to this whole neighborhood and we've got a family on one side of the property line that wants a rezone and one on the other side that doesn't. Those are the only two we've heard from. So I don't feel compelled to make a big change here.
Wait, for me to agree? I agree with everything you're saying. I questioned it when we first started talking about it. But that, I think, as a planning commission, you know, I'm just going to mention something happened probably 10, 15 years ago on Mill Street because that's where I live. Somebody wanted to build a house. They wanted to build on property be closer to the river. So we rezoned all the property and then they never built. So now we have property that got rezoned that the original people were using it. We're using it for farming and like that because it was RR. Well, now it's not anymore. I just, I would feel comfortable if this was zoned R1. You know, you have R2 to the east. You have RS to the west. It would give me a little bit of comfort knowing that was like a buffer in through there. But like you're saying too, there's only one person that really wants anything done with us. You know, we haven't really heard from the rest of them. You know, I know when we tried to rezone RR on the north part of town, we had an uprising up there. Everybody came out of the woodwork and didn't want it changed. I would like to hear more from the, you know, during a public hearing, hear more from the people. But I agree with Sarah. I don't think there's a real need to rezone any of it. Just my opinion.
Yeah, I'd agree too. Same exact thought for me.
Is someone prepared to make that motion? Or make a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny the request for rezoning.
I'll support that. All right, so can I paraphrase that? That you're requesting denying the rezoning of those properties that make up that red border, Dan? And you have all the properties that are identified in that, correct?
Yes.
Is that your intent, Levi? Was that your motion?
Yeah, that's my intention.
All right, perfect.
So I think it would be a recommendation to deny the rezoning of any or all properties within the noticed area from either, from the RS to either the R1 or the R2. Okay.
Better. Is that your intent, Levi?
Can you repeat that?
That you're recommending a denial of the rezoning of any and all of those properties identified within the red boundary from the existing RS to either the R1 or the R2 district.
No, that's not, that wasn't my intent. I don't think that that entire area in red should be changed over to a different zoning. But I think there's probably spots in there that could be changed that do agree with the master plan. So, yeah, I wouldn't vote to deny it to every one of those indefinitely. That's what you're saying.
Oh, well, the motion would be, I would remove the indefinitely part. So the way I had it, if you have portions of that that you're wanting to recommend approval to rezone, you could certainly do that.
There's parts in there that make sense to me when you walk through that neighborhood to change over to R2. It looks like it was a mistake when they zoned it RS. So I would vote to change some of that to R2, but not all of it.
You can make that motion instead. That, so if that's true, then your motion could be to recommend a denial of these properties to be rezoned from RS to R1 or R2 and a recommendation to approve rezoning these properties from RS to, you said, R2. That can be your motion. You'll just have to say which properties.
I would just deny the request to change what's in red there to R2 or R1 unless there's a compelling reason that other people want to change properties other than that.
That's what Rebecca was saying, right?
So the first time, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask a question or we passed up? Do you know where the 13 non-conforming properties are? Are they clustered at all or are they just kind of scattered throughout that whole area?
They are kind of scattered.
Can we wait on that question, sorry, until we get this motion either figured out and seconded or not? Then I'll open up the discussion.
Well, and that's kind of what I was...
Sorry, yes. Rebecca, can you read that back?
To recommend denial of rezoning of those properties within the identified area marked in red to be rezoned from the RS to the R1 or R2.
Or indirectly to remain the way they are, right?
Yeah, you're recommending a denial of the rezoning, yeah.
So we're not changing any zoning? Is that what you intended?
That's my intention, yeah. No change on this one.
All right, we have a motion and support. Board, any questions?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you knew where those areas were at because if there's a cluster, if it's right, if the 13 properties that are non-conforming are clustered into an area, maybe those are properties that then we say, "Okay, well, to make these conforming, we're going to rezone this one appropriately." And now those... But if they're scattered all over, then that doesn't, that process doesn't really work because then you're just dropping in random bits of non-matching zoning districts in there.
My recollection is they are scattered through that identified area.
Well, in today's point and Sarah's earlier point, we haven't heard enough from the public to force or to make us consider changing it. So unless we get, you know, compelling answers, I tend to agree, I tend to support that we not rezone. Jackie?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay. We ready to vote? All right, Dan, we'll do a call.
Roll call? I don't have the roll call sheet, so I'm just going to look. Yeah.
I can, but I thought you usually did it.
I can.
No, he doesn't.
But generally not at this meeting.
How about, are we done? Levi?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Nicole?
Um, yes.
Jackie?
So I'm either supporting or not supporting rezoning.
The motion is to recommend denial. So you're either supporting the recommendation to deny or you don't support the recommendation to deny.
I'm supporting the recommendation to deny.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Chair is yes.
And Scott? Scott Darling?
Pardon?
Darling?
We got Scott. Oh, Scott, sorry.
Yes.
And Dave officially is abstained or...
Yes, and the minutes should reflect that he announced a conflict of interest, abstained, and left the room.
Okay.
Perfect.
So the request for rezoning has been denied. All right, moving on to new business. Or should we try to get Dave back?
Yes, and just a reminder, the planning commission's action is a recommendation that will go to the city commission for action.
Right back to the new business.
New business?
Yeah.
All right. Then next item is the site plan review for Chad Stora at 1,000 East Enterprise Drive. Dan?
Yes. So I brought up section ninety-one twenty-eight regarding unofficial reviews. Mr. Stora has requested an unofficial site plan review for, for a property out on the southwestern corner of Enterprise Drive and Star School Road. It's currently privately owned. At the time that Mr. Stora submitted his request for unofficial review, he was in the process of negotiating purchase of the property. As we know, the April meeting was canceled. This was originally when it was going to be discussed. Since that time, Mr. Story, for Stora, has acquired the property or is under contract. So, a part of this for tonight is kind of a moot point because he is moving forward with the project. He has presented a very, very basic site plan for the project that you can at least look at. If you have questions, again, you can't make any decisions on anything. You can offer a suggestion or something, but there's really no decision or, or anything of a formal commitment that, that you can make tonight without a full-blown site plan. So, I'll bring up the site plan and Mr. Stora can just briefly talk about what his plans and intentions are, and likely he'll be moving forward to completing a full application and provide full site plan details at a later meeting.
Chad?
I'm Chad Stora. I own Stora Construction. I look at this property for growth within my company in the town of Hastings. I'm looking to bring my business office here, also my employees and all of my company assets. Also looking to develop the land for future growth and bring other small contractors and likewise small business to the area, to bring growth to the area. The proposed building for Phase One would be an office area for me and my office employees, and then the sixty by two forty would be, part of it would be my storage area for my company assets, and then propose to lease out to other contractors space for them to have their office or equipment stored inside. That's the rough idea here. I'm hoping for some input back on how I should be planning this and what you guys would like to see for the future development there. Thank you for your time.
And just as a zoning administrator comment, I have had a conversation with Mr. Stora regarding parking requirements in the, in the district and in the proposed use. I've let him know what those requirements would be. I've also let him know that there are, there are some design standards, especially as it regards to the office building itself, that he would, he would need to conform to to, when he prepares his site plan for Planning Commission review. And also, the surface parking areas, I've had a discussion with Mr. Stora regarding what the requirements are for the, the surface materials, so that he can include that information once he prepares his site plan for Planning Commission review.
Likewise with landscaping requirements?
Correct.
Particularly, okay. In reviewing, or listening to Dan, as far, as far as the normal requirements, are there, is there anything that you think that you will have a problem complying with?
No, no, and as our discussions have been, I mean, I've hit pretty much every level of topics between water distribution, landscaping, I want it to look nice. It's important for me, my name's gonna be out there, so, and I'm just looking for a place to grow, and I want, you know, I want it to look nice for the community.
Well, you, you make our job easy if there are no issues that you've, you know, oftentimes when we get one in for a preliminary review, it's because they know that they can't comply with certain requirements, and, you know, you're trying to feel out how flexible we might be on any of those. But if you've reviewed all the requirements and feel that you can comply with it, I don't know that we've got much that we can do to assist you tonight.
I, I do have a couple. Dan, what's the current zoning on this?
D2. Industrial two.
Okay. And then just looking at, and again, I know this is preliminary and obviously not to scale because the
No, it's, it's
The front hundred-foot setback looks like it's about the thirty-five side setback, and looks like it's about the thirty-five rear setback, so nowhere near to scale, and...
Yeah.
Right.
So I think when I did my office part, I tried to line it up with the office adjacent to the property, which was a rough. I know the hundred-foot on the side is way more than a hundred-foot, and this is, like I said, it's just a rough. But we're gonna be conforming with the actual setback. And that is to the building, not just part of the lawn.
Correct.
Any other comments?
So you, how many employees you have now?
I have ten right now.
Okay, so you're planning on having more than that when you get down here?
And, and the idea is to bring small business like me, and we can't all afford our own buildings, so I'm trying to bring other contractors and other likewise small companies into the area. I ran my business for four years out of my house, and it's just getting way too cluttered, and it's hard to find a small area that we can go to that's affordable and, you know, prosper. So I'm trying to give that option to other small contractors, and I've got a lot of positive feedback. Plumbers, cabinet maker, people that are looking for space in the area to lease, so that's, that's a big point in here.
Good. Welcome.
Thanks.
Yes.
Any other comments? Well, we, yeah, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to have an advanced look at it, but we're particularly happy that you're coming into the city and doing a project in the industrial park, so we wish you well. We look forward to seeing you back soon.
Thank you for all of your time.
Okay, thank you for your patience. Alright, we'll move on to seven B, review text amendments to A1, A2, and AO zoning districts, and consider scheduling a public hearing for June third, 2024. Dan?
Yep, you'll, you'll see that many items of the new business tonight are either in support of action plans labeled in the master plan, or some other identified issues in the work plan, the work task list. So yes, regarding B, subsection B, we would be eliminating single-family as a permitted use in the A1, A2, and AO zoning districts, which again is supported by the master plan action items. So, that would be a text amendment that we would know as a public hearing for if the Planning Commission chooses to set the public hearing for June third.
Questions for Dan?
Can I ask for the number of single-family dwellings that are within that district?
I, I wouldn't know that off the top of my head.
For, for when we do have this discussion formally?
Yes, I can get that information.
Any other questions for Dan? If not, do we have a?
Make a motion we schedule a public hearing for June third, 2024 meeting?
Moving to support it. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Alright, item number C is also a review of a text amendment to section ninety-ten-ten buffer zone development standards, and review adding section ninety-ten-fourteen prohibited spaces and, or species, and consider scheduling a public hearing for, again, for June third, 2024. Dan?
Yes. What this text amendment would do would basically prohibit invasive species of trees, bushes, shrubbery, that's currently listed in the state of Michigan, and I know Sarah helped develop the, the list. I'm not a horticulturist by any stretch of the imagination, but, again, this text amendment would bring into our landscaping standards, or would basically classify species that would be prohibited, basically because of their invasive nature, invasive species.
I had my wife, the master gardener, look at this, and she said, certainly looks like it makes sense, so. Yes?
Yeah, good question.
The black locust, box elder, and norway maple, actually the first two, those are more, when you see those trees, they're more grouped, they're congested, they're like forest type, and if those are gonna be prohibited from the credit of, or part of the landscape requirement, without taking them down, without cutting them out, I'm not sure you'd be able to then create a landscape buffer.
They, they just could not be planted as part of the buffer.
They can't be count, they can't be counted either, and if they're there, then you also probably can't put in what would be counted.
So, these are two different sections, so the section one is about the buffer zone, the section ninety-ten-fourteen is not about the buffer zone, it's just in general. So you can't plant these species, and if they are already in existence, they don't count towards the total requirement for the landscaping.
And that's why I said, it says here, existing prohibited species shall be identified on the site plan. So now we gotta have a horticulturist come in and identify them, and then it says that they can't count towards the landscape requirement, which means we still have to comply with the landscape requirement, and if those trees are in the way, how do we comply? And, the word existing, is it existing today when the site plan happens, and then next year there's a new species that comes in, or one gets taken off? I, I just, I don't know if it's comprehensive enough for, for us to review right now.
Would seem to be, is pretty clear. If they're there and they don't count toward the total, then you need to remove enough of them that you can get new species in. And that is, in fact, the objective that the state has set, is trying to remove these invasive species.
Well, then that should be the ordinance, remove them. Now, you can't do that. You can't tell someone to remove something, and this is indirectly telling someone they have to remove something.
Why can't you tell them they have to remove something?
Nor to get their site plan approved, they can't have those trees there. They've gotta plant enough of the allowed trees, so it's up to them. They want the site plan approved, they have to take them down.
I'm sorry, they bought the property before they decided to put a building up. They bought the property with those trees on it.
But you still have the authority to, to approve or, or not allow them to build there.
I guess you're opening yourselves up to a challenge, because I think, once you tell someone they have to take something away.
Why do we have any standards then? Because we're opening ourselves up for land building.
Well, I get the standards to
As with any site plan review, we, we have the ability to waive certain requirements. So, this becomes the requirement. The question becomes, is there justification for waiving that? So, again, it comes back to us to decide.
Yeah.
Make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for June third to review this text amendment?
Support.
Moving to support it. Further discussion?
Oh, sorry. Don't get ahead of myself.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thank you. Opposed? Okay. Item D, review text amendments to Article ninety-roman numeral eleven, signs, section ninety-nine-sixty-one, ninety-nine-sixty-three, ninety- nine-sixty-seven, sub E, and ninety- nine-seven-three, sub A, sub five, and consider in scheduling a public hearing for June third meeting. Dan?
Yes, as part of the work task list, I can't remember what, what sub number it is, but we've didn't, at one time we had sandwich boards in the B1 district, it listed as a temporary sign, somewhere along the way it was overlooked or not added. So Rebecca actually did a deep dive into our sign ordinance and called out various text changes that, that are, that should occur, and she's also adjusted the temporary sign to, temporary signs in the B1 district, such as sandwich board type signs as, as a permitted use. So she's done the deep dive. I can turn it over to Rebecca for any clarification of some of the other text clarifications or additions that she noticed that we should have in ordinance.
Yeah, the directive was simple, make sure that the B1 district allows sandwich board signs. So I went into your ordinance, you actually already defined such a sign as a sidewalk sign. You simply don't allow it anywhere. And so, so I just, in going through it, I made sure that your definition of sidewalk sign was fine. I went in, into your current, you know, the way you currently have your sign ordinance formatted, and added subsection F, so as to allow that as a temporary sign in the B1 district. I've suggested some sidewalks sign standards in there. Those are not currently in your ordinance. Anything in bold is not currently, so if you're looking at subsection F, that's brand new. So not only is, by adding that, are you allowing sidewalk signs in the B1, which is where you wanted them, but I'm suggesting those standards, so be sure you take a look at those, they might be anything you're interested in, but I wanted to put them in front of you. The other bolded statements, or, or you'll see these edits throughout these couple of sections, are just edits, they're pretty minor, and I'm suggesting them for consistency in your text. However, I did notice that you had two types of temporary signs that are not defined, that you typically find, defined in the sign ordinance, and so I added those. But any of this bolding that you don't like, I mean, take your red pen and take it out. It was me taking a look at your temporary sign standards to make sure they all fit and were reading the way that they should read.
One thing, and I think this became an issue a year and a half or so ago, the wireframe sign, a number of the companies that produce those are now using a combination of wire and plastic, so they're no longer totally wire. The part that gets pushed into the ground is in fact plastic. So I'm looking at the top of your page two, the top section under wireframe sign.
So it's not attached to a metal frame, it's attached to a plastic frame?
Well, part of the, it's, in some cases, but there, it's a combination of wire and plastic, but the part that supports it is actually plastic.
Okay.
So, if we just change that wording to say metal and/or plastic,
Okay.
I think we've got it covered.
Can we just say frame? Attached to a frame? Not specify a material?
Could be wood. Yeah, that's true. Yep.
Supporting frame.
Oh, there we go. We have supportive frames.
Can we, is there a, can we stipulate a size?
Yeah, this is just definitions.
Okay.
And because you actually allow wireframe signs under the And because you actually allow wireframe signs under the next section, you allow them under subsection G, and you allow no more than four. And then you have temporary sign standard of, for wireframe, each sign shall not exceed four square feet in area and 30 inches in height.
Okay. So I think just open up the, what the frame is made of.
Okay.
I had a question about the definition of sidewalk sign. At the, into the definition, it says that it's in front of the use which the sign advertises. Is the sign necessarily for advertisement? I mean, that's what it's most likely for, but can we require it to be for advertisement? Is that too definitive?
No, no, I understand your point. We can change that word. All it means is that the point of that particular definition is to make sure that they're not just being used to identify or advertise or direct to things that are, that it's not in front of. Otherwise, it would be a billboard, right?
Right.
But by definition, they're not onsite signs because they're on the sidewalk, which is the public right of way. So with the sidewalk sign, you deal with them a little bit differently. And so really, instead of saying, hey, it has to be on the site of the use to which it is related, you're saying it's gotta be in front of. But it uses the term advertises, but it actually means that it's just related to that business. So I can change that word.
And we have a number of apartments in our B1 district. Would they be able to have a sidewalk sign that says anything they wanted to?
Yeah, if you're allowing it in the B1 district, you can't allow it for one year and not another.
And then Dan, do we require permits for temporary signs?
No, we do not.
So we might wanna reword under F number two, because it says placed in front of the storefront, holding the permit for the sign, but there will not be a permit holder. But I'm sure we can say something that achieves the same effect.
Haven't we always made people come to the council's order for to approve placing a sidewalk sign?
There's lots of them out there that no one's gotten approval for.
Yeah.
And I mean, I think it's unnecessarily burdensome to have to do that.
As long as, you know, we do have restrictions as to how many, as long as we've got that to fall back on.
Right.
And the one that talks about how long, 30, 30 days out of 120, how do we, how do we date stamp that? And then, I know what a sign is, I think most people know what a sign is, but when the sign becomes part of the frame, especially for the wireframe ones and stuff like that, are we truly calling that a sign?
Well, I mean, you're, so you define sign, you also define how to measure a sign in your definitions, so.
And what I'm saying is, one of the signs is 32 square feet, but what if it's got four by fours that hold it and it hangs from the four by fours, and four by fours are eight foot tall? I'm, yeah, I'm making up examples that may not be relative, but a four by eight chunk of plywood, that meets the 32 square feet, but if there's a frame around it, so I'm not sure if that's delineated enough. And sidewalk signs, you know, the A-frame, you know, if the A-frame, the actual sign part, the advertising part, say that's two by two, but the frame is three feet wide by five feet tall.
Well, you, can't you deal with that by just saying that the size restriction includes the frame?
That's what I'm wondering.
Well, so I'll look in here, I didn't know if you're saying, so all sign ordinances have a provision that says, here is how the sign is going to be measured? And so I didn't know if you were having difficulty with the current provision in the ordinance, or if you were saying, I don't know if there's a provision or not, here's my question.
I don't know if there's a ordinance or not.
Got it. So I will look for that, and if I think it somehow is not addressing your concerns, but I'll add it to the next and so that you can feel comfortable in how that's measured. But all ordinances are very clear about how you're going to count that.
And I thought we dealt with the frame before, but these are some new ones, like that, that you call it a sidewalk sign, they're mostly like an A-frame, right? They got, you know, they're hinged at the top and they open up and they're almost free standing, right? Well, there's a lot of superstructure that isn't what they would consider signed. It's just necessary to hold it, but.
And commercial, commercial signs, whether they be monument signs, pole signs, wall signs, roofline signs, those are subject to a building permit that's reviewed and issued by professional code inspections. Occasionally, they'll call me for a clarification if there may be stump on a sign, but generally those are approved by our building department, which is professional code inspections.
And then a real fine distinction, temporary sign is kind of the granddaddy label for all of these. And in that first paragraph, it says, and which is not permanently attached to a building or wall or to the ground. So I read that. And then under the sidewalk, the next page, section 90-967, number three, says temporary signs shall be anchored in a safe and secure manner. The anchoring, it says what it can't be, but I'm thinking anchoring means rope, cable, chain, something. So is anchoring, make it somewhat permanent?
Well, I mean, I don't think so.
I don't, I don't either.
You know, the permanent foundation means that you're installing footings or what have you, right? As, but anchoring, I think you guys, because that's in there right now, but I'm guessing what you guys are saying is you don't want your temporary signs blowing around.
Or.
Well, because then that becomes a hazard, right?
Yeah, or if someone says they don't want it to be stolen, they run a cable through it, and the cable creates a slip and fall hazard, or, I don't know, I just, I'm trying to picture on the sidewalks, which is all concrete, how do you anchor that darn thing?
Well, so the anchoring requirements are, those are tied to all temporary signs, so they're not specific to the sidewalk sign.
I know, but sidewalk sign is part of that granddaddy.
Yeah. So you're saying you would actually prefer to see that provision removed?
I don't know. I, yes, probably. I guess to me, that means a weight at the bottom that's anchoring it down via gravity. I don't know if that's clear.
If it's necessary, I think it just depends on how it's constructed, really. I don't know if it's heavy enough, you might not.
You know, once again, you can't legislate every situation, so let's be, feel that we're close and then let the market dictate, and if it ends up coming back to us because it creates problems, then it comes back to us. Other questions, comments? Ready for a motion?
We're still on D, are we?
Huh?
Yes.
Yes. For those of you that have lost track.
I'll make a motion to set up a public hearing for June 3.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Okay.
I supported, I'm sorry.
I did.
Oh, thank you.
Item E, review and discuss draft zoning map for consolidation and simplification.
Yes, again, as part of the work task list that planning commission has developed, was the inclusive an item or an issue to look at possibly combining or streamlining our, the number of zoning districts. For community our size, we do have a considerable amount of zoning districts. It would be prudent for planning commission to review the zoning districts and pare back accordingly. Rebecca has worked on this list, and this list, and you have it at your chairs tonight. By no means are, is anyone expecting any decisions to be made tonight. These are just some recommendations that Rebecca has put forth to look at, to consider at a future meeting next month. Rebecca did not draft a map because that'd be getting the cart in front of the horse. Basically, what we'd ask planning commission to do is to review this over the course of the next month. Rebecca can chime in here in a second, but just to review this, to see if this makes sense for, for the city to consolidate or streamline our zoning districts. Rebecca, I'll have you.
Yeah, so the, page two is really the meat of it. Page one is the zoning plan, which is the master plan, which I do want to refer back to, but, but the actual proposed consolidation plan is reflected on page two. And this particular approach would reduce your existing 19 districts down to 13, so I thought that might be appealed to you. The removal of the RR district is actually recommended by your master plan, and so that was first on the list. But what I did was I went through and studied each of the districts in terms of what's allowed in them, what's reflected in the statement of purpose, what they're trying to achieve and where they're trying to achieve it, and what their minimum square footage is and density, dwelling units per acre density, to try and get a sense of where things were duplicated, if you will. Obviously, each district is designed, it has distinctions from another district, but what I was looking at it was from the approach of, if they are designed to do similar things, then perhaps they can be combined, and then you can make the necessary adjustments so that you don't lose what was important in that district, as an example. With the, let's say with the AO apartment, office, and the B5, they're all allowing single family, two family, a certain amount of office use and a certain amount of, a certain level of multiple family. And so although they have distinctions between them, I think from the basic premise, they are designed to do the same thing, and so you could go in, combine them into a single district, make sure it has the design components you want, and then, and then that could be a single district, and then you could just make sure that it's in the locations you want. Another thing too, is just by virtue of the way you crafted them initially, you located them in certain areas, and, and you have different districts looking at the same areas. And so there, there's a way of combining those two. So this particular proposal is taking all of that into consideration. I know you have to study it, but I wanted to give you that background as to why that's being proposed. Interestingly, I did this first. I went through and did that exercise first to create this list, but then I wanted to sort of connect it to the master plan for you so, so that there was some, so that you could have some foundational support for it. And I put in the zoning plan, and I thought it was interesting that the zoning plan sort of is very reflective of the same conclusions. I mean, you can see where they're saying, oh yeah, in this category, here are the districts that would work in that, and they're all the same combination that are being proposed, which is why I was just, I was just tinkering around with what you might call them, and was using some of the same language. That was strictly my, my attempt, though you obviously don't have to use any of these names. But I just wanted to, to give you a sense of what I was talking about in terms of combining them.
So it's really more of a change in, in unification of nomenclature than it is really making any significant changes in the actual requirements that are imposed?
Yeah, I mean, you are gonna make some, because each, you know, I think to just say, oh, you could combine all of these and make no changes, that would suggest your districts are extremely repetitive, and they're not, obviously, they are distinctive, they have differences in them. But I think, what I tried to look at is, if you combine them, would it, could you include all of those distinctions into a single district and make sense of them? So like, for instance, because the B5, in that example I used, the B5 district is distinct because it actually has a lot of design standards that the other two don't have, but maybe that would be nice to have a district that allows offices and mixed uses and this level of, of higher density residential, it's allowing all the same things, and they all have design standards. Maybe some of the design standards are different, but I'm thinking, to me, there's continuity in that. So, yeah, I mean, you are, you would be making some changes, but yes, to your larger point, it wasn't where I was thinking, yeah, you just go in and you just rip that district out and you just totally eliminate, but rather, it seems like you could create one that does the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me that, you know, we have too many, and, yeah, I'm not sure that, yeah, I think they read differently because they were adopted at different times.
To do a particular thing.
To do a particular thing, but that probably, there's not, yeah, looking at it now, is there really a need to make those differentiations? So I want to be careful about how we do that.
Yeah, well, because I was thinking, so the B2, the B4, and the B6, right, the general, the west, the south, they're all targeted by design for these major corridors, but you have an edge district, which is designed to talk about the edge of the downtown. So you actually could achieve some of what you were achieving in the 4 and the 6 by using the 3 in that location. And then just creating a corridor or a gateway district that addresses the rest of it. So it's like, to me, that seemed a little more, blew it that way, a little more.
Okay.
Where does the RR go? Does it automatically roll into one, a different one, or do we look at that and choose how to zone it? I mean, it, it didn't get lumped with RS, which I would think would be natural.
Oh, yeah, that's probably how I should have shown that. You're right, now that I think that. I was all, I was all stoked about crossing one out. You're right, I should have done that because my, my initial thought is that that's probably where it would go, right? Because the idea is that, what the plan says is that by virtue of having the RR that has an acre minimum, is you're, you're promoting that kind of, and it's not city density, right? And they can do that in the townships, and so. So my guess is that primarily, it would go to RS.
And then the steps involved in this are pretty comprehensive, we've gotta define the new standards, and we gotta notice that.
Oh, I mean, it's a big, yeah.
This is a big ask.
You would have.
Ask, ASK, not.
Well, I mean, so from a text standpoint, right, you, it would be, you would be creating some new district language, so.
Eventually, everyone's gonna get noticed in the city.
Well, and then when you go to do it, if it changes anyone's zoning district, or even if you just change a title, right, maybe you're not even changing their district, but if you're not calling it AO anymore, but you're calling it R5, that's considered a rezoning. So you, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a.
It's a huge task, because I think that as we did the master plan, we definitely saw a need to do that. So the fact that we now find it's going to be a huge task shouldn't detract us from following through, so.
And actually, it's also consistent with, not only was it a work plan item, which came from the master plan, which was consolidating, but from what I can see, it also accomplishes the strategy in the plan, which was to craft your zoning districts more in line with your regulating. regulating plan, and that will do this, this will do that, too, so.
Okay. So you have homework.
Just one point of interest, I, I know on your, Rebecca, like the RD, or the opposed R3, you reference both single-family and RT, RD duplex and A2, which, again, we would, we would not include single-family, correct?
Oh, yeah.
And then the same thing with Apartment 1, we're already going to have a public hearing to eliminate single-family as, as a permitted use there, and then same thing with AO and B5, the single-family would not be included in those two, right?
That's your job.
Yes.
Just in case you were wondering. Okay, any other questions or comments on this? If not, we'll look forward to a rather lengthy discussion at the next meeting. So, thank you, Rebecca, good work. All right, old business, JPA, JPC update, we have.
JPA, nothing particularly notable to report.
Rebecca and I made up, I think, 60% of those, or 40% of those in the tent, so. Questions on JPA, JPC? They do both exist. But there's not much going on out there right now. Okay, Dan, work task list?
Work task list, we've discussed several items tonight that Planning Commission will be reviewing for review and possibly completion in the coming month or so. Our housing committee will be meeting this Thursday morning, I believe, to talk about further items on the work task list. So more to come for the Planning Commission.
Thursday morning?
I think it's Thursday morning.
Just because I know you need something else to do, but I would suggest that on your work task list, anything that's in process, highlight it.
Okay.
That way, it makes it very easy for us to see what we're already committed to working on, and what other items are left we need to address. Any other questions or comments for Dan? All right, tracking report.
Nothing new to report, I believe. Let me see, no, nothing new to report. Other than, Mr. Butler's sign is up on the, the building next to the pharmacy. There's no names on it yet, but the sign is installed.
Okay, and it meets the requirements we put in place?
Yes.
Okay.
You say it's up on, on the building?
Yes.
Really?
The new building.
I thought it was a monument sign.
No, it was.
Monument sign is stated to be removed.
Yes. I had not confirmed compliance of that yet, but I will.
Okay. Any other questions for Dan on the tracking report? Thank you. Open public comment and discussion.
I'm not familiar with municipality, open comm, or public comment. I'm used to public comment, is this discussion also?
No, it's public comment, so.
Can I ask a question?
You may.
Jackie, you were very specific after we closed the public hearing about asking about the master plan as it pertained to the, can I ask why? What was your reasoning for that? Is there something in the master plan that stuck out to you that you were worried about?
No, I was just saying that in general, we have some new Planning Commission members here, and I have been through the Citizen Planner Course, through Michigan State University Extension, don't know if anybody else on this panel has been there, but, you know, that's one of the things I learned, that the master plan governs what the Planning Commission, you know, were making decisions, that, that's what we should be looking at. And so I was just saying that out loud and clarify for people who didn't know that, how it all ties together, because sometimes I think we lose sight of what we're here for as a whole, and sometimes I feel like we sit here with our own beliefs and what we think, and really, that shouldn't be directing us, we should be thinking, what's better for the whole and the community, and, and keep in mind, we're supposed to be referencing back to that master plan. So it was just for others that maybe don't know that, or for the public that may not know that. Sometimes I already ask a question that I know the answer to, just because it benefits others.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
The other comment I'd like to leave.
It, it doesn't mean that the master plan is infallible.
Right.
It simply means we should look to it, and it should provide guidance, but if we find out that we erred in our thinking in the master plan.
Correct.
We can go back through that process and correct that.
Yeah, totally understand, totally understand. My other comment is just, just add a comment. Although I feel bad for Gary and Pam, I, this is not self-serving. When I, when I first learned of this rezoning, I, I literally saw it, thought, because Gary and Pam did too, that they were just asking for one thing to be rezoned. I still don't know, nor do I care to know, but I don't know how it got from one person asking to an entire area, and it became a source of frustration. As I talked to some of my friends and acquaintances, and we were just discussing it, I got the exact same question from all, oh, it wasn't about a dozen people, but from all of them, the question was simple, why are they rezoning everything from one house? And I still never really got an answer on that. I was very pleased to hear some of your conversation tonight, and appreciate your conversation and your openness about it, but in today's society, unfortunately, and apparently I've become a little cynical, when I can't get an answer to something, it seems like it's just a little underhanded. I'm not accusing anybody of being underhanded, but the appearance of it sometimes speaks louder than the truth. It felt like something was trying to be pushed without knowing why that was being pushed to change an entire section of the town, that's been that way since I've been there for 35, 30 years. So, just a comment.
Thank you. Nothing, John?
No.
All right, thank you. Staff comments?
Nothing further.
Okay, Commissioner comments?
I'll just say I appreciate the diversity of thoughts and opinions on this board, and I think that should be valued.
Absolutely. The ultimate objective in having such organizations. Any other Commissioner comments? All right, motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.